Here.
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 Reposo.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion over the public hearing.
Second.
Motion over the public hearing has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, Paul Amarillo, 78 Kaufman Road, Tivon, Rhode Island, doing business as Ray's Auto Sales for a license to operate an auto repair shop at 707 Brayton Avenue on Lot F-7-15 Assessors Plan. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents at all? Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Hearing none, we move on to the next one. For curb removal, Charles and Jennifer Lacorn, 125 Ratcliffe Street. For the removal of the curb as follows. At 125 Ratcliffe Street, the existing opening is 16 feet. Curb to be removed is 11 feet. There is no curb to be added. The combined opening proposed after alteration is 27 feet. The parcel is currently serviced by a 16-foot curb opening slash driveway. The applicant proposes to extend the existing driveway an additional 11 feet. The total opening for the location will be 27 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents who want to come down and state your name and case and address for the record? And just... You can just have a seat right here, please, and speak into the microphone. Thank you so much. It's probably not necessary, but it's okay.
Hi. We just bought the house on Ratcliffe Street. It's a really skinny street. It's hard to pull out. We already have parking for three cars, so we'd like to not have the curb to get out. That's all.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations as well. Are there any other proponents? Any proponents? Are there any opponents? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, Carlos Abad, 975 Plymouth Avenue, Apartment One, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 2089 Blossom Road, existing opening is 18 plus or minus unpaved. Curb to remove is 18 feet. Curb to be added is 18 feet plus or minus unpaved. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 18 feet. The parcel is currently serviced by an 18-foot plus or minus curb opening slash gravel driveway. The applicant proposes to close that gravel opening and construct two 9-foot paved openings. The total opening for the location will be 18 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seeing none, I'll take the motion to close the public hearing, which is made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. We'll go right into Committee on Finance. Nobody? There's no one that's signed up for system input time, and there's no one for finance. So do we need to open the meeting just to close the meeting?
Yep.
City Council Committee on Finance will come to order. Clerk will call the room.
Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Dionne. Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
Ponti.
Here.
Reposo.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. There is no item in Finance, and there is no one who's signed up for system input.
Second.
So I'll make a motion to close. Do you want to speak, Counselor?
I have a question.
Councilor Seat Seven, Councilor Reposo.
The second quarter budget report. When do we expect that? Was that supposed to be this meeting, or was that supposed to be in two weeks?
This meeting.
Next meeting.
Is this not considered the second meeting of the month of January?
Uh, not officially, Counselor.
Okay.
It was the second of what, that was a ceremonial...
That's what I wanted to ask.
Yeah.
I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions?
Mr. President, that's just as a point of information.
Councilor Seat Seven, Councilor Ponte.
Thank you. It's been tradition, at least from my time here a long time ago, that the first meeting before the City Council after the inauguration would be the quarterly update. I did have a conversation yesterday with the City Administrator and the mayor, and we had that conversation, and they also forgot that the inauguration is a City Council meeting. The city charter does say the second meeting in January, which essentially would be this meeting. So hopefully going forward in January, the mayor and the City Administrator at least acknowledge to me that next January we'll have that at the second meeting. So this is actually the second meeting because the inauguration's the first, so...
Correct. Officially, it is the second meeting, but there were no items on the meeting other than the President and Vice President.
Yeah, no, I get that. I'm not trying to be argumentative here. It's just like, we have an hour here.
No, but I agree. This is the second meeting.
Yeah, and we have an hour here. We're not going to resume until seven o'clock, and it would probably have been ideal to have that discussion tonight, so... But it's fine. No problem. I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, listen, with a little bit of luck, we'll get it for the next meeting, the way it's been going, so we'll see if it comes to us now.
I don't understand. I'm sorry, what?
Routinely, we've been delayed in getting those, so we'll push to get it for the next meeting.
Yeah.
It should have been for this meeting.
I'm sure you will. I mean, the charter's pretty clear.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to be argumentative back here, but I mean...
I'm saying you're right. I'm just making this comment.
My comments are, the city charter is clear when we have these quarterly updates.
Yeah.
It's not up to the administration when they decide that we're going to have it come down when they feel it's necessary.
I understand.
Okay.
We share your frustration, Counselor.
All right, thanks.
We'll make sure that we get it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else? I think a motion to close, motion to adjourn Finance has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Committee on Finance is now adjourned. Regular City Council meeting will begin at seven o'clock. City Council come to order. Clerk will call the room.
Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Dionne. Hart.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Pereira.
Here.
Ponti.
Here.
Reposo.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
President Kamara.
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? At that time, please keep Michael Dion in your prayers. Please remain standing for pursuit to the flag.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with a name and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Now, clerk?
The first item before you is the mayor's request for the appointment of Stephanie McArthur as Parking Clerk and Director of Traffic and Parking.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. On the motion, Councilor Seat Seven, Council Vice President Ponte, I mean, Council Ponte.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate Stephanie on this appointment. This is a perfect example of an individual who's worked in the city for many years, worked in several different departments, and has been elevated to running a department now. And that goes to show that where we have people that are in city government that are working in specific departments can have the opportunity to now run their own department. And I congratulate her. I wish her the best in this, and I think this is a fine appointment for this position. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Seat Seven, Council Reposo.
Just a quick question. As far as the position is concerned, are they merging the position now that it's Parking Clerk slash Director of Traffic and Parking? Are the two positions being merged?
That is the title.
That is the title.
No, it's always...
Okay. So is the position Parking Clerk going to be filled later on, or is that not going to happen anymore?
It's been one of the same.
Oh, it's been one of the same. Okay. Thank you.
Has the title changed?
Hasn't changed.
Okay. I was clarifying. Thank you.
Further questions? Roll call. Just, I don't know if I said that, but motion to adopt hasn't been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, roll call, roll call, sorry.
On the confirmation, Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dionne. Hart.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Ponti.
Yes.
Reposo.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
President Kamara.
Yes.
Can she come down so people can...
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Good job. You got it.
Now, clerk?
Item two is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Stephen Long to the Housing Authority.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion away of the rules.
For the City Administrator, come down. I have a question on the appointment.
Second.
Motion away of rules has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Jake, and I spoke with the mayor this morning. First off, before I get into my question to you, I think very highly of former Councilor Long, who's being appointed by the mayor for this position and most likely going to be in favor of the vote to support him, but I just want to go over a couple of quick housekeeping items. First off, obviously, there's no hesitation here or shyness that the person up for this appointment is cousins with the mayor, so I wanted to just make sure that there's no state ethic issues when it comes to this in terms of state ethic law that you can elaborate on.
Sure. So I'm sure everyone on the council knows this, but just for anyone watching at home, what you're referring to is Massachusetts 268A, Section 23, in this case subsection three, which is the kinship section. It prohibits a conflict of interest where you have an immediate family member, which is a spouse or a child, and suggests that where you have kinship, which is a family member outside of that immediate, that there needs to be a disclosure to the Ethics Commission. So in this case, both former Councilor Long, as well as the mayor, have made disclosures to the Ethics Commission. In addition, pursuant to the statute, they sought an opinion that was given today from the Ethics Commission regarding whether or not this appointment would be prohibited. And subsection three of section 23 does say that an appointment of this kind is not prohibited so long as a full written disclosure is made, and in this case, it's being made by both sides. So I can say categorically, unequivocally, that the Ethics Commission is aware of all of the circumstances surrounding this appointment, that there is no ethical problem with this appointment, and that all of the necessary disclosures have been made.
Okay. And did you file the conflict of interest disclosure with the City Clerk's office as well?
I believe that it's either going to be filed or has been filed. I just know...
The clerk can clarify that.
They both can file.
Actually, I have it right here. So it has the stamp on it, so it's been filed.
Okay. And that was done what, today?
It was done today.
Okay. In terms of the term of this position, now, I remember vividly under Mayor Sutter, when he was here, that he appointed an individual to the Housing Board in the middle of somebody else's term, causing there to be somewhat of a staggered term, for lack of a better term. So if appointed by the council, how long is Councilor Long's term? And if you don't know this, I defer to the City Clerk. Is he, if approved by the council, going to be finishing up Mrs. Sahadi's term, or does he have a fresh five-year term or four-year term?
So Mrs. Sahadi's term technically expired on July 12th of 2023. Therefore, subject to city ordinance, there was a six-month period where she was allowed to remain in that position. It was not an extension of the term, but rather, under the ordinance, she was allowed to remain in the position with full voting rights for a period of six months, which would expire this Friday, January 12th of 2024. So my understanding is that the appointment is going to happen from the end of that six month additional... I don't want to say an extension, but term of service for a period of five years. So five years from now.
So is that for sure? I mean, you're... I don't mean to be too critical on my first meeting here, but you said you think. So is it a five-year term, a four-year term, or is it a three-year, six-month term? Do we know for sure? I mean, I just think it's appropriate for the council to know when his term expires, if approved. Through the president, through the clerk, for clarification on this?
It's a five-year term.
It's a five-year term...
The previous appointment has expired. He is not filling an unexpired term. He was appointed effective January 4th of '24. He will expire January 4th of '29.
Got it. Okay. My only other comment, and I appreciate you coming down to clarify it, because the perception of conflict of interest is obviously concerning. I think very highly of former Councilor Long. He was a great counselor. I think he's going to make a great addition to the board. I just wanted clarification that we, as a council, are not going to be involved in any possible conflict of interest disclosure or conflict of interest, more so the mayor appointing his cousin to the Housing Board, which is fine. Putting that aside, I also wanted, because I got a couple of phone calls on this this week, Mrs. Sahadi served about 25, 26 years, I believe, on this Housing Board, and she didn't resign. She's being, a new person's being appointed, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the mayor has decided, regardless of her term, he's replacing Mrs. Sahadi. Whether it's Mr. Long or it's somebody else, she's getting replaced, correct?
I wouldn't agree, not to make a fine, put a fine point on it, but I wouldn't agree to your characterization of regardless of her term. Her term expired. So this is an expired term. Mr. Long is being appointed to an open position.
Okay. And that's fine. And just so, she hasn't resigned because there was some confusion out there, Mr. President, over the last couple of days, that Mrs. Sahadi resigned from her position, but she's getting, a new person is getting possibly appointed to this job. And I just want the respect out of somebody. And her and I, we've had our battles when I was here on the council for a long, long time, but I just want to at least make sure that she has the mutual respect. Somebody who's served on a board for 26 years, whether we had political differences or not, I think needs to be acknowledged. And I'm hoping that there's at least some kind of acknowledgement from the administration and this council going forward for somebody who is being replaced by another individual but served 26 years on a body that has had a lot of work to do. So I just want to state that for the record. So I don't have any further questions. You've clarified my points, but I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Pre, can you come up for a minute? Just set your... We don't... Thank you.
I don't think she's done it 26 years.
Counselor Pre.
Counsel President Kamara.
Thank you. I just want to make my position very clear on this. I know both individuals very well. I served with Councilor Long. He's a great guy. I like him a lot. I think he's going to do a fine job if he does get the appointment here. But I won't be supporting this today because I have too much respect for Mary Sahadi and what she's done and what she's accomplished on as a housing chairperson. She served, she was at a meeting yesterday, and I believe she was reappointed as the chairperson of the Housing Board. So I think that having her serve this community for so long, there's no reason, I don't see a reason not to keep her on that board. But the mayor has made a decision that he wants to replace her, and whether it's Councilor Long or someone else, I'm sure he's going to find someone to replace her. I just don't agree with it. I think that too many times, we ask people to serve, and they serve, and they do a good job, and then once there's a disagreement with the administration or something, just that they don't, they clash, that person's being asked, you know, this is no longer needed. I don't think it's right. I understand how it works, and I'm not saying I, you know, I get it, but I just can't sit here and not support someone that I have an awful lot of faith in, trust in, and has done a good job. I just, and wants to stay on. My understanding is she doesn't want to stay on, and she would stay on if she was reappointed. So as far as someone saying she resigned, though, no, no one told me she resigned, or I haven't even heard that she resigned, and I know she didn't. So with that being said, it's not, nothing to do with Council, former Councilor Long. He and I served together. We did a great job together, and I have tremendous amount of respect for him. I just cannot support this tonight. So with that, I just want to make it perfectly clear. I actually wish she'd come back as a work in the city, you know, in all capacity, but it's neither here nor there. Thank you.
Counselor Sampson.
I just want to make a statement, too. I don't think, I think that what's before us is not Mrs. Sahadi. I don't think it's a reflection on how good that she was or how bad that she was. She has done a wonderful job to the city, but it's not in our authority to appoint anybody. It's our authority to, you know, up or down the motion. If it's not former Councilor Long, Mrs. Sahadi's not going to be put back on that board, so it's going to be someone else, so we can kick that can down the road. But it's not in our authority to, you know, put people on these boards just to vote what we have here. And so I just want to say, I think Councilor Long would be great. I will be supporting this, but that's not a reflection on not, you know, grateful for the wonderful job Mrs. Sahadi did. She's no longer on that board. She has not, you know, six months ago, her term has expired. She's been gracious enough to sit there for the past six months, but it's not in our authority to appoint just to approve the position that's come before us. So with that, I yield to Council President.
Thank you, Counselor. There being no further questions, a motion to adopt has been made in second, I believe?
Roll call.
Roll call.
On confirmation of the appointment, Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Counselor Dionne. Counselor Hart.
Yes.
Counselor Kilby.
Yes.
Counselor Pereira.
Yes.
Counselor Ponti.
Yes.
Counselor Reposo.
Yes.
Counselor Sampson.
Yes.
President Kamara.
No. Congratulations, Mr. Pre.
Congratulations.
What's up, Steve?
If you want. Madam Clerk?
Item three is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Gregory Brilliant Esquire to the Licensing Board.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded. Councilor Seat One, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you. Just in terms of the documentation that we've received, so we've got all the effective dates and the expirations, but for this one, the effective date is January 5th, 2024, but the expiration is not available to we... Is there not an expiration?
There's not an expiration.
So they just serve at the will?
Servant.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Might as well do a roll call.
On confirmation of the appointment, Counselors Kadeem.
Yes.
Dionne. Hart.
Yes.
Kilby.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Ponti.
Yes.
Reposo.
Yes.
Sampson.
Yes.
President Kamara.
Yes. Congratulations. Madam Clerk?
Item four is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reappointment of Victor Farias as the Veterans Graves Officer.
Motion to confirm.
Seconded.
Madam Clerk has a letter that she'd like to read.
Yeah, if you want to vote.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now you can read this letter.
So he left a note this afternoon to the council members. "I would like to thank our VSO, Michelle Hamilton, Mayor Paul Coogan, and all the members of the council for reappointing me for the floor of a grave and flag officer. It is a great honor that I take pride in making sure all the brave men and women that lay to rest here in our great city never be forgotten." Thank you, Victor Farias.
Thank you.
Item five is a request from the mayor in orders accepting grants. The first grant in the amount of $25,000 from Bloomberg Philanthropies for an asphalt art initiative.
Motion to adopt.
Seconded. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Mr. President.
An emotion, sorry. An emotion, Councilor Seat Seven, Councilor Ponte.
Thank you, Mr. President. On these, or at least this one specifically, are these matching grants, do we know? Do we have to match them, or are they just grants to be accepted? Do we know?
Mr. President.
It's the documentation we have from the grant writer says there is no minimum match required.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilor Seat Five, Council Vice President Pre.
Yeah, I did speak to the grant writer today about this, but one of the things that, and I did speak with the mayor, that I'm concerned with is you have this $25,000 grant from Bloomberg Philanthropy to do an asphalt art on Broadway, and I just think it went to one of our art associations. This one went to Frac, and the person that's going to be doing this is a firm out of Boston. We have so many artists in the city. You have Viva, you have people that did the murals. Sue Wilkinson has a great group of kids that, I was there last week, and Councilor Sampson and I took a ride by there. I was there last week, and Counselor Sampson and I took a ride by there. They had four computers going with three students at every computer, looking at, they're going to be painting a lobby at the Soco Building, which is the one that's on Globe Street owned by Alan Amaro. You know, I just, I have questions about this. How do we get these grants, and why does one group get it and not the other? You know, we have Viva, we have FRAC, we have this other group, we have the Denisys, we have other art people. What do we do to get everybody to work together? You know? And I think if we have students here and youth here that have the ability to do this kind of work, then why are we not promoting our own? I mean, I believe Counsel Pong just talked about that with the traffic, you know, promoting somebody who's been there. So, if we have kids in the city and adults in the city who are artists, why are not we promoting their work? I really would like a little bit more information on this before I take a vote on this. And I know it's a grant, it's money that we're going to get, but I just want to know how the grant money that we got, how it's going to be used and dispersed and dispersed fairly. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C. Four, Counselor Kilby?
Yes, I would just suggest we accept the grant. And who's the chairman of the Tourism Committee, the new chairman?
Counselor Sampson.
No, that's, I think it's me.
Counselor Pong? Oh, is it you?
I think so, yeah.
So, it's in Counsel Pong's wheelhouse, and I think we can have a file of resolution, we can have an explanation to all of the questions. We can have the grant written down here, we can have organizations here. But I don't think we should hold up the acceptance of a grant, and it's not a matching grant, so.
No, it's not.
I think we can get our information through the subcommittee. So, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. I agree. The counsel brings up some good points, and I think that's the best way to handle it. Counselor C. Six, Counselor Aponte?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I agree, and I have no problem referring it to a committee if you want to do that. But I mean, it's financial questions that we have, it's grants that we need to accept. I mean, we can sit, it can sit in a subcommittee, a subcommittee can have a meeting, then it can get referred back to the council, or we can just refer this whole matter to the Committee on Finance, have all these people come down, and have a frank discussion about where we're at. So, to my colleagues' point, unless there's a dire need to accept this today, it's going to, you know, do we have, is there a deadline? Like, we don't accept it today, that, you know, we can't get the money? Anything like that? Do we know?
I, Counselor, I'm not sure, but I think the safest bet, as Counsel Kilby pointed out, would be to accept the grant today, and then have those, have a meeting, figure out why we got to this point. Why did we pick someone out of Boston instead of someone locally? There might be legitimate reasons for why that happened. So, just, we'll file a resolution, as he said, and we'll just figure out why it is that we're doing it the way we're doing it. But just, I don't want to jeopardize losing the grant.
Yeah, I don't either. But, Mr. President, with all due respect, the grant says that we're going to be giving $25,000 to Bloomberg Philanthropies. It doesn't say we're going to send $25,000 to FRAC. So, is there, is there a clarification that we need? If we take the $25,000, can we reappropriate that $25,000? So, we can do what we want, but, you know, I'll defer to my colleagues. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor C. Eight, Counselor Sampson?
So, I, maybe I can make a little clar, so I think it's, the grant is from Bloomberg Philanthropies. It's there, they're the grant hub that went to FRAC, and then FRAC is proposing to put it to a Boston firm. So, and I do, I, Counselor, Vice President Pereira is absolutely right. There's a problem with communication with some of these art programs. There's no way around it, how, you know, one firm is getting it and the other is not. I mean, it's amazing what some of these young kids are doing. But I also agree with Counsel Kilby that we should probably accept them. There is probably a deadline with this. But with that being said, I don't, I don't know if we could put a caveat to that, that, you know, they come down before us once the money is accepted to find out, are the young people going to be able to work on this? Is it? But there is definitely a problem that, there's a disconnect. There's a huge disconnect with some of these art programs, that they need to start working together, and everybody needs to be inclusive, and it's not at this point. But I don't want to hold up funding, but there is a problem there. So, with that, I yield, Counselor.
Thank you. Counselor C. Seven, Counselor Repozo?
Yeah, I just want to highlight the press release that was released on December 7th that talks about this grant and what exactly FRAC's role is in it. They're the primary responsibility over project management oversight. Then it highlights who the professional muralist is going to be, who is Boston-based. But the press release kind of lays everything out exactly what this grant's all about. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C. Three, Counselor Hare?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, I agree with what everybody's saying here, and I can, through to the president, to my colleague next to me here on the left. Did he, was that a, did you make the motion yet?
No, just a suggestion.
Okay. I mean, I would be in favor of that, of that motion if it's made.
Which is to accept the grant?
To accept the grant.
File a resolution and hold a meeting afterwards?
I agree with, yeah, I agree with Counselor Aponte to, rather than have it at a subcommittee, maybe have finance and have everybody come down.
So, we won't accept the grant, then?
No, no. I accept, I'd make a motion to, what Mr. Kilby made the motion to accept the grant, and then may have the parties come down, whether it's finance or whether it's Mr. Aponte's subcommittee.
Okay. Deputy Leader of Counsel, I'm fine. You yield, Counselor?
I do.
Thank you. Counselor C. Five, Counselor Pereira?
No. My understanding is the city's the one that applied for the grant, and then they needed somebody to follow it through. That's where I get the sticking point. If the city followed it through and decided to give it to FRAC or any other organization, how is it going to be that it goes from one organization to another when grants and things like this come in? I don't have a problem accepting the money, but the problem that I have, and it shouldn't be in my opinion.
Dispressing it.
At finance, it's what are the rules that we're going to make around how money goes? So, I mean, I think it should go to tourism, and they can talk about, and try to bring these groups together, because they are all tourism-related and economically development-related. I don't think it needs to go to finance. Finance is, yep, you've got $25,000, boom. We've got the money, it's in. Nothing to do with money anymore, but more to do with how it's going to be dispersed.
You yield, Counselor?
I yield.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we know if there's a timeline or a deadline that we have to accept this today, or maybe we could just hold off and put the whole thing?
We just, according to this chart, there's just a duration on the grant.
To December 24th of 2024.
Motion to waive the rules, Mr. President.
I, you can, but I don't think Seth has any information on it. He's already.
He does.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry. I apologize. Okay. Can we just let one other counsel make a point for it? Counselor C. One, Counselor Kadim, do you have your hand up?
I did. So, I guess I would let the administrator speak to this, but typically when you're writing a grant, if you've already got a partnership or an entity that's involved, it's written in the grant. So, that's number one. So, if we're going to accept the grant, the grant's accepted, we're not going to change it. So, I don't know why we'd want to call everybody back once we've already accepted it. So.
Well, just to go forward, my suggestion was to go forward for the next one.
No, no, no. Yes, so.
Figure out why it is that there's a disconnect.
If we want folks at the table, then I would say, if we potentially want to make changes, then I wouldn't accept the grant. But I don't know how much changes can be made, since it's already been submitted and written, specifically that, I'm assuming, I don't need him to come down, but I'm sure he's going to tell us that it was already written to include that partnership in how the funding source, because you don't write a grant and then unilaterally make decisions on how it's going to be executed, because there are, there are grant requirements that are tied to a specific grant, as to how it's dispersed, who can disperse the funds, reporting requirements, things of that nature. So, I'm sure all of that has been followed, but I just wanted to clarify that. So, I'm okay with accepting the grant as submitted to us. It's not a, it's not a matching grant. I guess what I would say is, is that if we do have hot burn, though, and we want to bring folks down, that I would suggest that we don't approve the grant. That, that's the case. So, with that, I yield.
That's what I said. Motion to waive the rules?
No, I'm good. My esteemed colleague answered my question.
Okay. There you go. That's why we let everybody speak. Counselor C. Five, Counselor Pereira?
Counselor Kadim is absolutely right. When you write out the grant, you have to have who's going to implement the grant, et cetera. But my question is, why does one get picked out to be the carrier of this grant and not other people? It's not fair.
So, Counselor, to your point, as Counsel Kilby had indicated, maybe we should try to draft up a resolution and have them come down, whether it's the Tourism Committee or Finance, I don't, doesn't matter to me, have them come down, explain how it is that this is done, and find out why there is a disconnect with the artists, and how we can get them more involved going forward.
I think it's overdue.
All right. So, what's the motion, folks?
The motion on the table.
Motion to accept the grants?
Motion to accept the grant has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselor C. One, Counselor Kadim?
And just quickly, this is more of a statement. I think, when we start looking at these grants, I think the administration is doing a phenomenal job in the organizations that we have, the multiple organizations that we have. When we start looking at the arts and the murals and trying to beautify the city of Far River, I think you've seen the progress.
I agree with you, Counselor.
I think we need more of that, and I just, I just want to make sure that we're not short-sighted about, you know, what we're doing. And I agree that we want to have that equity to make sure that all organizations have the opportunity to be able to have funding. But also, I want to make sure that we're still moving forward with the beautification and including the arts and that diversification throughout the towns.
And like I said earlier, there might be great reasons why this was chosen, it was written this way. So, but, I mean, it's, it wouldn't hurt to have the conversation. But I do agree, the administration is doing a big job with all this type of murals. Madam Clerk?
Item 5C is a grant in the amount of $1,342,365 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the Municipal Public Safety Staffing Initiative.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the third grant, which is item 5C, is the amount of $653,973.25 from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative.
Just a point of information. I think 5C was mentioned for the last one, which should have been 5B. Yeah, so just, for the record, just to clarify it, for the minutes. I think everybody understood where we're going.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt 5C has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the request from the mayor and a proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $16,000 to the Care Fund at Bristol Community College to help offset short-term financial needs of Far River students.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
To adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a communication from the mayor and proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $699,500 to purchase police vehicles, crime cameras, and traffic lights.
To adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight is the mayor's communication and proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $38,500 to purchase a passenger van for the Office of Veteran Services.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Counselor Repozo, do you want to just make it, do you have your hands up or not?
Yeah, I had just a question on.
You'd like the half-wave, you like up in.
Sorry. I didn't move fast enough, apparently. Just a question on seven, if I could. There's a statement at the end about ADA accessibility and the intersections in which these, these signals are going to go. Do we know exactly where those are? The only reason I ask is that the past two years I've been working with Commission of Disability about this topic exactly. So, I'm just curious if it's something that's been brought up before about areas that we've brought up as concern. Are those going to be addressed? Is there a list of where they're going yet? Would be my question.
I haven't seen a list, but there probably is. I'm assuming there would be.
Would it be possible to get a list or an idea of where they may be going?
Yes. Yep. Stephanie was just here.
Thank you. I yield.
No problem. Thank you, Counselor. We'll get that to you.
Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt item eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is a communication from the mayor and a deed for 138 Hartwell Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Seconded.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. And a motion, Counselor C. One, Counselor Kadim?
Just a question as to why, I guess, the property is being deeded over to us. Is that the Hartwell School?
Soviet, the former Soviet School, Hartwell Street, yes.
Do we know why that's?
I don't. I don't think.
I think.
No.
Yeah.
Is it the entire property, or is it just the?
I believe it's the entire property.
Because it looks like, so when you put up 187, it looks like the old Soviet school, but then you got the old, there's multiple buildings, so.
There is.
It's the entire?
My understanding is it is. I'm not positive on that. But I.
I yield.
Counselor C. Five, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I believe we're going to get some money in back taxes, too, on that. According to Mr. Thomas, I saw him today. Without a yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C. Six, Counselor Aponte?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I mean, this is indicative of what, I mean, I think I was on the council when we sold the school to him. This is indicative on how municipalities sell real estate. It's terrible. We have to RFP people buying things for $5,000 or a dollar. It's crazy to me. I would like to start exploring, maybe as an initiative as we go forward, RFPing real estate brokerages, maybe commercial brokerages that specify in these kind of things, because I don't want this building, and I hear there's other buildings coming down the pike, too, by the mayor in the next couple of meetings, that we're going to just sit on these things and let these things deteriorate. I mean, we are professionals as a city of holding on to real estate and letting it deteriorate. And so, you know, maybe I'll file a resolution at the next meeting to have a discussion on the process. I know, you know, there's only so much you can do as a municipality in terms of how you liquidate real estate and whatnot, but we're going to be taking this building back, and I don't know if anybody here knows what the plan is going to be when it comes to this building. Are we going to put an RFP out? Are we going to be sending bids out? Are we going to put it up for sale? What are we going to do? I just don't want it sitting here. So, just wanted to point that out. I can communicate my thoughts to the city administration, but again, I don't want to hold on to this for long, because it will be a disaster. So, I yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's why we have an agency of redevelopment authority that takes buildings that are developed, and I'm not sure why or what the plan is. Maybe we'll turn it over to them. I'm not sure what the plan is for that. Maybe we have to receive it first, then turn it over. But that's what's in place for buildings like this, that just the city has no way of maintaining it and no use for it. That's why we sold it to begin with. But, yeah, no, a lot of good points. We can explore them. We can actually maybe send a resolution, have the redevelopment authority come down and see what their plans are, what they think of, if they're even interested. Sometimes they get to pick and choose what they want, and maybe we should just say, listen, this is what you're getting. Redevelop it.
Yeah, that'd be proactive at this point, instead of being reactive at once.
I agree. But that's the use of those agencies. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a communication from the mayor and proposed ordinance amendments to section two, various personnel sections of the code regarding emergency medical services and the Corporation Council position.
Motion to refer to ordinance, second.
Motion for Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a communication from the mayor and proposed ordinance amending the mattress disposal fee.
Motion to refer to ordinance, second.
Motion for Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
Item 12 is the mayor's communication in an order declaring four damaged police vehicles as surplus property.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. And a motion, Counselor C. Five, Counselor Vice President Pereira?
Yeah, the question I have is, in the write-up here, it says that we're going to have these four vehicles as surplus. So, and they're authorized to salvage them. Well, if you're going to salvage it, maybe if you go out and have an auction and bid on these four vehicles, you might have people that are willing to buy them and, you know, fix them up that way. I mean, which is going to give us more money? I don't know. How much does a surplus vehicle go for if we go to the scrapyard and want to get rid of it? Are we going to get 100, 200, 500? I don't know.
Not much more than that.
Is that what we're going to get?
If you scrap them, you're lucky to get $200,000.
I mean, I would just think, let's see where we can get the best thing for our buck.
You have the auction first, and if it doesn't sell, go to the scrapyard.
Right. Well, when we had those old stoves that were Glen Woods or whatever manufacturer it's on, they sold it online for like $300. Are you kidding me? We could have kept that and had it here in the city. So, it bothers me when they just get rid of things, thinking everything's trash.
You yield, Counselor?
I tend to hold on to stuff. But with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor C. Seven, Counselor Repozo?
Yeah, I mean, I guess to the point of the letter, it says that major drivetrain parts have been salvaged and repurposed. So, if it's essentially a body of a car, it's not really worth that much. So, I yield.
Good point, Counselor. There's not that much to sell.
No.
Counselor C. One, Counselor Kadim?
Just more of a general question in terms of, and I don't know if the administration has an answer to this, so just give me the nod if you do or don't, so before I make the motion to waive the rules. So, typically, we usually do a, we'll declare surplus property for like a large lot, and then we.
One year.
Right. The purchasing agent would go out, and then we would do bids, and people would come through. Just curious, are we planning on doing that? Is this the only, you know, declared surplus that we have? And then I guess the second part to it is that the order reads that the purchasing agent be the individual. Do we have an official purchasing agent?
No.
No.
So, I think I.
Can we?
We do?
I can speak to both.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. Motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Come on down, please.
Okay.
Welcome.
Good to be back. So, I'm going to take the questions in reverse. At this point, we do not have an official appointed purchasing agent. We do have at least three people in the city right now who are purchasing certified. We have several more in different departments who are going to the training, so we can ensure that the procurement process is being followed across departments, even when those departments are not in government center. At this point, pursuant to the mayor's authority in the charter, he's appointed me to sign as purchasing agent, but I only do so in consultation with the folks that are purchasing certified, and I will be certified in the next six months. So, that's the long-winded answer.
So, you're getting state, you're getting designated as, at the state level, so you're submitting the delegation form and stuff, is that for the position? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to amend the order since, okay.
And then the answer to the question of what's going to happen with these vehicles, these are all significantly cannibalized already. I believe one was the, as Counselor Repozo correctly pointed out, these have been parts cars for a long time. Three of the cruisers were in serious accidents or had been subject to serious damage. One of them, I believe, was the animal control vehicle that is also in an extremely significant state of disrepair. of disrepair. I believe part of the appropriation under Bristol County ARPA includes a new vehicle for animal control. So these, while there is value to them, the collective value is under ten thousand dollars, uh, is the estimate that we're getting, but we're certainly going to go through the process. And then finally, you asked, uh, are these part of a larger lot? That larger lot has been being worked on probably for the better part of the last year, fire trucks, rescues, uh, city vehicles, those have been sold at auction as much as they can be. Uh, all the ones that have value have been sold at auction, the rest, uh, we're looking at, you know, a couple last ditch efforts to sell them at auction and then possibly scrap. These are very likely going to go that way, but they are not part of a bigger lot, um, and it's because of their condition.
Okay. All right, um, I do have some, I guess, purchasing agent questions, but probably not appropriate for this time, so I'll, I'll just file a resolution to discuss that in finance.
Good idea.
Thank you.
You, Counselor?
I do, I'm sorry.
Okay, Seth, I have a question, you said someone sold it at auction, do we have a yearly auction? We usually do it once a year, the council will get a list of everything on the order, on, on the chopping block, and then we go down to, um, the incinerator, and they'd have a big auction there, do we, uh, did you say we had an auction, or when was the last time we had an auction?
So the auctions have been ongoing, so we don't do the auction in person anymore, it's all online, there's municipal auction sites, uh, where we've been disposing of, uh, the vehicles at least since I started.
Piece by piece, as they come along, we don't?
Piece by piece as they come along, yeah. There was a significant glut of items that had been declared surplus that were sitting in the lot behind DCM, um, as of two years ago. Uh, one of the first things, uh, that I remember, um, hearing about when I came on as city administrator was getting those online for auction and selling them.
And you feel that's working better than?
I haven't checked, uh, in the last several months, uh, but every time I did talk to, uh, the DCM folks, and then Tammy Matino, when she was here, it was, uh, it was moving, uh, the property pretty consistently.
I mean, I'm not sure how many people even know about that, I don't, I know I didn't know about it, and, but that's all right, as long as we're advertising that we're going to be doing and give people advanced notice and where they can go and look at this stuff, I think it'd probably work other than that. I think it used to be quite a bit of turnout in the olden days when everyone would show up once a year to dis- disperse of all the objects that were no longer in use. Did you have a follow-up question, Counselor?
I do.
Counselor C one?
You kind of just brought up another question that I had through your line of questioning, I guess, through the city clerk, I don't, and I don't know if you recall it, so maybe, Counselor President, you do, in the past, have we just given authorization to the administration to declare surplus?
Yes.
Because I don't, I don't think we've had specific line items like this to say that it's five trucks or whatever.
In the past, we would get all the surplus, and we'd have to declare them surplus and ready to be sent for an auction.
So we would get like an inventory list?
Yes, inventory list, estimated values, what they were, detailed list, there was a sighting, you could go see them prior to the auction, um, it was, people came from all over.
No, I recognize, I remember the, the auction process, but I, I wasn't sure if it was just a blanket authorization to either the, uh, purchasing department to say, okay, we're giving you authority to declare surplus property and then go through with the sales.
Item specific.
Okay.
Each department was asked yearly, what are you going to get rid of, whether it's a printer, copier, a vehicle, you name it, and it'd be all on a list, it'd be dispersed, everyone would see it, if any of the, shared with all the other departments, if somebody needed something, it was in working condition, they would take it, they would use it. If it wasn't in working condition, it would be sold, you can't replace it, parts no longer available, whatever the case was, and then we would have one auction with fire vehicles and police vehicles, cruisers, whatever was not, um, needed anymore, and they'd have one auction. And I think they did both, I think they might have started doing it in person and online at the same time to see what the bids were, but, you know, people have been asking me about it, and I don't, I don't think they do it anymore, they just scrap it all out. And sometimes in this case, as Counselor Reposo pointed out, there's, you couldn't tell them, the best use is to scrap it.
I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions? Counselor C five, Counselor Vice President, prayer.
I think they started, I think they started to do it online when COVID came.
You might be right.
And they didn't have that, but a lot of the things that were sold online, I don't remember it coming before us to deem it as surplus, because I know the stove never came before us, I'm really.
Madam Clerk, do you want to weigh in on this as well?
We haven't seen, we've, we've received lists from the purchasing agent in the past, but we have not had one here.
I'm going to call you tomorrow, because we never received a list on those stoves.
I can let you know when the last one was.
And they were beautiful and in mint condition, and we have stuff. You have tops that go on roofs with all brass, that's at the Armory, you've got all kinds of stuff downstairs. You've got about, I don't know, two hundred, three hundred, Christmas wreaths, sell those things, let people decorate the city with them. There's so much stuff that you have there, so if you're going to do, uh, an auction, I think that I prefer to have it like we used to, where people can come, can see it, it gets put online too, because you're going to make more money that way. I don't know, and I know Tammy tried to do her best, but right now, there may be a bunch of people doing this, but I think it's the Collective Treasurer's Office that are doing, working with the purchasing, and the clerk that's there, and you're going to get your certification in what, six months? Is that what you said, or did I misunderstand you?
So, yeah, so my, my certification will be in six months, Attorney Humm is certified now, uh, is getting the paperwork, but she's gone through the training, uh, Al Olivera, um, Rebecca in, uh, Treasurer's Office, Assistant Treasurer, um, who else? I think I might have been one or two short when I mentioned, but we, we've been training a number of people in order to, to have a, a comprehensive purchasing department to do some of the things that weren't getting done before.
It seems like we're just, hey, if you can do this, you're going to do that too, you're going to do that, you're.
No, there's, there's a plan.
I kind of like to have a purchasing agent, to be honest with you.
There is a plan, um, and, uh, I think that, um, on closer inspection, there were certain things that weren't happening in exactly the right way, so, um, this plan is moving towards a much more comprehensive and strict approach to purchasing.
Well, we did have a good purchasing agent, and the one before that was very good too, um, so it moves both smoothly, hopefully we can get back to that. Without a yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Seth, no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. So I don't even remember, the motion has been made and seconded, did we vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Item thirteen is the Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the ordinance.
Referred to ordinance and legislation.
Motion for a committee on ordinance legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas Government Center provides services, permits, and vital records to the people in Fall River and the surrounding areas, whereas the public does not always know the specific phone numbers or locations of the departments they need to contact, whereas providing this information is an important municipal service to residents, business owners, and visitors of Fall River, now therefore be it resolved that the telephone operator position located at the information desk in the lobby of Government Center be maintained within the municipal budget to allow questions about office locations, phone numbers, and municipal services within the building to be answered promptly and accurately, and be it further resolved that the administration research ways to update the resources for this position going forward.
There are motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Item fifteen is a citation for Lawrence Barola.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt a citation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The order granting permission to operate an auto repair shop, uh, on behalf of Paul Amarello at seven oh seven Brayton Avenue.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the order granting permission, um, for the removal of curbing at one twenty-five Ratcliffe Street for Charles and Jennifer Licorn.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have an order granting permission for the removal of curbing at twenty-eighty-nine Blossom Road for Carlos Abbott.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the Police Chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, report on licenses has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty, our applications for the renewal of auto body shop licenses for Paulo Curvalo at four hundred Second Street, David Saber at two thirty-one Bedford Street, and David Del Rosario at seven fifty-one Eastern Avenue.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-one, our applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses for Henry Pleiss at fifty-five Murray Street, Joseph Zuccao at four five six Rodman Street, and Stephen Nassif at seven seventy-one Rodman Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-two is an application for the transfer of an auto repair shop license at two, at, excuse me, at eighty William S. Canning Boulevard from John Mattie Junior to David Rosenberg.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-three.
Counselor C five, Counselor Vice President, prayer, sorry, Madam Clerk. Okay, sorry. Madam Clerk?
City Council meeting scheduled for twenty twenty-four.
Entertainer motion first.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, is there a second? Second, under motion, Counselor C five, Counselor Vice President, prayer.
Just two of them, in November and December, December is the twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve, and November is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, so those two.
We could change them, Counselor.
You had a suggestion on changing those?
I want to present to the council, where as it's in the charter, second to fourth week, and then if anyone wanted to make that change, we would make it, but we obviously weren't going to make Christmas Eve, um, and we're not going to, I mean, for Thanksgiving as well, as much as we like each other, we're not going to be sharing gifts.
That's too bad.
It is. Wear your Santa hat. So we should, we have a, we could do the second and third, or we can do the week after?
Well, uh, the one is November twenty-sixth, that's going to be changed, so if you did November fifth and nineteenth, and then the third and the seventeenth, you'd still have two weeks between.
If that be the will of the council, that was, I was going to do a draft one of those, but I figured that would work for, for me and everyone else, I'm sure. Is that, is there a motion to do that, to change them to those dates?
Seconded.
Let's just get it correct, we're going to go from November twelfth to the fifth?
Yep, the fifth and the nineteenth.
And the nineteenth, so scratch November twelfth and November twenty-sixth, and replace them with November fifth and November nineteenth.
And then November third and seventeenth in December.
Excuse me?
November third.
December.
December, December third and seventeenth.
Okay. Is that in form of a motion? Because I'm, I'm fine with that.
Make a motion.
The third and the seventeenth.
Okay, Counselor Hart made a motion for the exchanges, Madam Clerk, you haven't corrected, there are second on?
Second.
Are there any other conflicts?
Anybody else have?
So what were the?
So the appropriate date would be if you look at November and December, we're basically going to move them up a week, it'll be the first and the third of November, which is the first, uh, November fifth and November nineteenth, and then we're going to go to December and make it the first week in December, which is the third, and December seventeenth, which is the first week and the third week, instead of the second week and the fourth week as per the charter. Okay, motion hasn't made, and there was a second, I believe, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And if any council has any, wants to make a change in the future, if something pops up, we can always vote on it as well to change a particular day. Madam Clerk? Any opposed to that, those changes? Seeing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Item twenty-four, our claims.
Motion for a Corporation Council.
Motion for a Corporation Council has been made and seconded, all in favor?